Good afternoon. We're going to call this school board meeting to order Tuesday, October the 15th, 2024 at 3:30 PM by satellite time per superintendent's service. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Mr. Phil Leary and our invocation will be given by Pastor Aaron Wells.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am new to the area. That's why most of you don't recognize me. We just moved here from Virginia about three weeks ago. And when we lived in Virginia, it was a joy to work really closely with the school system, doing things to support the schools and support the students. So, thank you very much for letting me come this afternoon to be with you all. And I just wanted to offer a blessing over the proceedings that happened here, that God would give you wisdom. And the best thing I could think to do is give the actual direct quote that God gives to, as a blessing for his people. So, this is from Numbers. I just want to read this over you and then pray over the proceedings that are going to happen here today, that God would give you wisdom, discernment, courage, and unity as you work together for the good of our students. So, this is Numbers 6:24. It says, "May the Lord bless you and keep you. May the Lord make his face to shine upon you and be gracious to you. May the Lord turn his face towards you and give you peace." So, God, we ask this afternoon, God, that you would give these people here wisdom. Give them courage. Give them discernment, God. Help them to work together in a spirit of unity for the good of the students and the families in this county, Lord God. That you would just give them wisdom and grace as they deal with each other, as they tackle issues, as they hear concerns, as they put policies and changes into place, Lord God. That you would just cover everything that happens here with your wisdom and that we would feel your peace as we work. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
And welcome to the area. Alrighty. What part of Virginia?
In Middlesex County.
Middlesex County. I'm familiar with the eastern shore. We'll talk later.
What do you think about our hurricanes here in Florida?
I love it. I love it.
Okay.
Alrighty. We are now ready to conduct the business of the board. We're going to start with Mrs. Whitehurst with the retiree recognition, then Project Praise updates from Mrs. Ashley McCool and Mr. Nathan Edens, and the HCA Teacher Spotlight in that order. Thank you.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Board. Sorry, I'm going to go ahead and be able to present today, but to a wonderful woman retiring this time. But Ms. Whitehurst is presenting in Seattle, Washington, so I'm going to do this for her presence. This is one of our wonderful gifts that we can go ahead and do in HR is to recognize our wonderful retirees and congratulate them on their next chapter. So, today, I would like to recognize Ms. Jackie Williams. She is retiring with 27 years and six months in the Transportation Department. So, if you want to come on up here, Jackie.
Bus drivers are our eyes and ears. See it all.
And you can come back whenever you want.
Thank you, Jackie.
Good afternoon, Board, and Mr. Holmes, Dr. Surrancey. So, I'm proud to be here today. I'm Ashley McCool and I'm super excited to be here representing our Department of Federal Programs today. And with me, I have Nathan Edens. Nathan has been with federal programs for four years, coming from Interlocken High School where he was a teacher. He oversees our federal program that manages the Title IX Part A, which is the McKinney Vento Program for all of our students who are designated as homeless. So, he's going to give you just a brief overview of that, if you're not familiar with that, or any of our guests are not familiar with that. And then specifically because the giving season is upon us, he does a lot of work to make sure that these students have a great Christmas every year. And so, he's going to share a little bit about that work and how anyone in the audience, you guys, or folks you may know who might be viewing online, would like to help us with that. So, thank you.
Thank y'all for letting me be here. So, I do want to give just a quick overview of my program. So, like Ashley said, McKinney Vento is the federal law, but we call our particular program Project Praise here in Putnam County. So, if you're looking at the slide over there, you'll see some of the qualifications that allow a student to be recognized as part of Project Praise. The reason why I pulled this up and I wanted to show it to you is because usually when we think of the definition of homeless, we have a little more narrow view of homelessness. We think of it only as those living on street benches or in the woods or whatever. And that is part of the thing, but as you can see, there are other things that would qualify as those that are living in a hotel or motel if it is due to a hardship. So, if you own the hotel and you're living there because that's your business, that doesn't count. But if you're there as a temporary due to a house fire, flooding, hurricanes, any of that kind of stuff, then you would qualify. Substandard housing is our fastest growing area. We're having more and more people moving into sheds and tents and stuff as housing prices are going up and up, as y'all are all aware. And then we have emergency shelters and transition shelters, which of course in Putnam County, there's only the domestic violence shelter and then interface that qualify for those. And then I left off the top one on purpose because it's actually our largest group of about 70% of our students fall underneath the top one, which is called doubled up. And that's our families that are living with other people due to some kind of hardship. Again, it can be a hurricane. It can be a flood. It can be a house fire, whatever the case is. They're living with people because they cannot find adequate housing otherwise. So, what our program is able to do with Project Praise is, one of the biggest pushes that they want done is immediate enrollment for these students. And that does a couple of things. At one, it gives the student stability in an otherwise uncertain time. It gives them meals and guaranteed meals and all that kind of stuff. It also helps us to put eyes on kids that might be being moved around illegally and so forth. So, we're able to get them enrolled immediately. We're able to get them identified. Through the program, we're able to provide a school of origin transportation that allows them to go to the school that they were in when they became homeless or began to experience homelessness through the program, either through donations or through grants, temporary grants of different kinds. We're able to write and we're able to get school supplies, hygiene supplies, clothing, and those kind of things. Another thing I'm able to do with the project is what's called unaccompanied homeless youth, which are students that are 16 or older that are not with a legal guardian. And we're able to help them get paperwork that they need to be able to function that oftentimes you have to have a parent to do. I'm able to sign and help them get those kind of things. So, that's just a quick overview. One of the biggest things that my program is able to do is to provide tutoring in-school hours for these students. This is a big deal because obviously these students oftentimes don't have good transportation. And so, being able to meet them in school and being able to help them, we're able to meet them there and help them get on track for schooling. I listed there. You can look at the schools that we're able to do right now. I have two tutors, paraprofessionals, that are able to go to a different school each day. And so, we're able to cover all of the elementary schools. The tutors help not only remove barriers for students, but they also help, kind of, they're kind of boots on the ground. It helps me see what's going on in schools and kids that might need help that I might miss just visiting on an inconsistent basis. So, they are a big part of our program, so I just wanted to give them a quick shout out. So, as Ashley said, one of the things I wanted to kind of mention today is this time of year, we come to what we call Project Praise Christmas. And the way Project Praise Christmas works is if you look at the picture on the far left over there, it's kind of a wish list. And what the students do is we give these wish lists. The guidance counselors meet with the students that are in our program at the time. They kind of fill out this wish list and they just tell us what they want. And we take that wish list. I take all identifying information off of that list and assign it a number. And then I pass out those wish lists to donors who come along, cite us, and they spend the whole month of November buying gifts for the student. And then they, once they got them bought, then we go and collect them. And that's that middle picture. That's me going and collecting. I believe that one was from the college. My big three donors that have supported every single year that I've been a part of it is St. John State College, the hospital, I think, what is it? HCA now, and then First Credit Union. They have, through the years, have consistently covered over 115 students, just those three donors. So, they're my biggest section. So, we go, we pick up the gifts from them, and then we take them and we put all the gifts into red. Kids call them Santa bags. They're actually laundry bags, so they can actually have a purpose after Christmas is over with. So, and we put them in those bags and we take them back to the schools. And the schools then, the parents come in, are able to pick it up. So, with that, last year, we qualified, or we were able to sponsor 280 kids. Now, we did have a little hiccup last year, so we had sponsors for 230, and then we wound it up with 280 students. I made some frantic calls and some great people in this community stepped up. And we were able to not only get every single kid covered, but we actually had extra and we was able to use to help a family who had a house fire and some different things like that. So, I just want to give a shout out to all the sponsors, the individuals, those that stepped up. One particular lady really stepped up and helped a lot, just meeting those needs. So, this year, we're hoping to cover 288. We have 288 in the program right now that could use Christmas. So, that's our goal this year. So, if you want to be a sponsor, I would love to talk to you. So, that's my contact information there, if you're interested in helping in any way. To close out my talking part, I'd like to share just a very simple story. So, two years ago, I think it was two years ago now, I received a phone call about a family that had had a house fire. It's a mom and two kids, a kindergartner and a first grader. And so, I called the mom, and of course, she was upset. She just lost everything in a house fire. And it was way past our cutoff date. We tried, like I said, we tried to have the list through the donors by November 1st. So, it was way past that. It was after Thanksgiving. But as I talked to her, I just, I told her I'd find sponsors, somewheres I'd find sponsors. We would cover. I said, "It wouldn't be much, but we'll cover it one way or the other." And the mom, through tears, told me, "You don't understand. You kept Santa alive one more year for my kids." So, that's why we find this to be a great thing to be able to do for our community. So, I thank you with that. And with that, I just want to say again, thank y'all for y'all's time.
Nathan, could I?
Yes, sir.
Could I, other than telling you how much, how important that this really is, that you keep up with this information? How are you having any trouble identifying some of the kids in all these massive rural subdivisions in the west and south end that are living in these tool sheds? Do you have a process that you're being able to find? Because I see a lot of them, and I feel like are being moved from one place to the next.
So, it is very difficult for a couple of reasons. One, families like to hide that information because they're scared of DCF getting involved. And so, they don't like to admit it. So, one of the things we try to do is break that stigma and let them know, "We're here to help them to keep DCF from getting involved, not to call DCF on them." So, that's one of the things that we do. But as far as being able to identify them, the tutors have been a big help because they're in the schools. And so, as we are able to meet clothing needs or hygiene needs, students are like, "Wait a minute. How did you get that?" And so, then they're able to talk. And the kids, as y'all have all been in education, y'all know, kids will start talking to you when they trust you.
And the counselors and the role that they play, whether it's a child being physically abused or sexually abused, it's out there.
Right.
And it's not just Putnam County. It's everywhere.
Absolutely.
I just would like Ashley and you to let us know what we as a board, through the superintendent, can do to try to help.
I appreciate that.
Anything we can do.
Did y'all have anything else for?
I'm good.
I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Ashley, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. I'd like to invite the foundation and HCA up, please.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. And I'd like to start by saying thank you, Madam Chair, and the board, and the students, and teachers, everybody, for this opportunity to approach you today. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Les Sims, and I'm here to represent the Education Foundation of Putnam County. We're here today to talk about a special teacher we have in the room with us today. Last year, HCA reached out to us and said, "Look, we want to help out with some of these teachers and recognize them what they do." And so, they obligated $2,500, and every month, we're going to come up here and reward another teacher. For those of you who do not know, these teachers are graded through some sort of rubric through the principals at each school. So, it doesn't go through the Education Foundation. We're just a partner with HCA. So, not to waste any more of your time, I'd like to say thank you to everybody. And I'd like to introduce James Perez. He's the Vice President of Human Resources for HCA Florida. So, if you'd like to say a few things?
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. Being the Vice President of HR at the hospital, we do have a lot of employees that grew up here in Putnam County, went to school here in Putnam County. So, for us to be a part of this presentation is wonderful because if it's not for the teachers and the students that go through the system, you know, us as an employer would be hurting. So, it's really, we really do appreciate this opportunity. And as a former teacher myself, I see the value, great value in this. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this month's teacher is from Interlocken Junior Senior High School, and her name is Jordan Craig. Jordan's principal wrote about her that she exemplifies the characteristics of the portrait of a graduate. She is an engaged collaborator who attends and contributes to all district and school-based science professional learning communities. She models best teaching practices at school-based PLCs and is always willing to support her colleagues with whatever they need. Jordan is also an innovative problem solver, fearless learner, and a resilient individual. Last year, she embraced the implementation of the DUCS Unlimited Curriculum for her environmental science class and celebrated her student success on the certification exams. Jordan is also a confident communicator. When she has questions or concerns, she doesn't mind speaking up and will work diligently to ensure students get what they need. She also practices global citizenship. She participates in community events and attends sporting and club events. Jordan has recently begun pursuing her master's degree in educational leadership. Interlocken Junior Senior High School is proud to have her as a recipient of the HCA Teacher of the Month. Congratulations, Jordan. Amber.
And again, congratulations. And it's just awesome to see how this community comes together and connects. Hospital, Project Praise, our teachers, everything. It's just, it just all works together for good. And I'll leave it at that. Okay. At this time, did we receive any requests for public comments? All right. Having none, we are now ready for the public hearing. Item number one, adopt new policy, Putnam County School District Therapy Dog. You're going to do a roll call. How you want to do this?
If you have. Yes, ma'am, I will.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt item D1. Are we, we are voting on this?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. You're right.
The new policy regarding the therapy dogs.
I'll second it.
It's been motioned by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we adopt item D1, the policy regarding our therapy dog. And second, by Mr. David Buckles, are we ready to vote? Right?
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Adopt.
District three?
Adopt.
District four?
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt.
Okay. Unanimous? We are now ready for our consent agenda. We will start with you, Mr. Leary.
Madam Chairman, I am good. Have nothing to pull.
Thank you. Mrs. Wagner?
I have nothing to pull either.
Mr. Buckles?
I spent some time with the superintendent, and he educated me on quite a few things, but, other than the agenda thing, which was about time, you know. It's been a long time since I was in kindergarten and Sandy was my teacher, so. Anyway, I have, I have nothing to pull.
And the question is, did you master what he taught you?
Yeah, right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mrs. Pickens?
Well, I was going to pull H1, but it's all completed. Now, we have the information. When I originally looked, it was incomplete, but it's all complete. So, I'm good.
Alrighty. And I have nothing to pull.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept the consent agenda in its entirety. And second, by Mrs. Holly Pickens, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. We are now out of regular session into emergency session.
Good afternoon, Board. On your emergency item, you have a proposed new calendar that allows us to have our makeup time for Hurricane Helene and Milton. Thank you. I was like, Michael? No, no, Milton. Just to give you a little bit of update, we work under the Florida statute 1101.60 that we have 180 teacher days. That's what our calendar normally has. But there's also a caveat in there, or the equal number, the equal number of hourly, hourly requirements. So, State Board Rule 6A 1.045111 states that the 180-day requirement is really 720 net hours for K-3 and 900 net instructional hours for 4-12. And so, using those factors of the 900 or the 720, we were able to add, we have enough instructional time that we were able to not have to come six additional days. We took the calendar and we pushed the semester back a little bit. And between, by pushing that semester back a few days, we're able to capture the right number of hours in each semester. The semesters were a little uneven to begin with because we tried to finish, as part of the board's wishes, to finish the semester before we go to winter break. But this time, we will come back and finish the semester after winter break. The one other piece that is a caveat to us is those classes that have credit-bearing courses, high school 9 through 12, they must have either 130 hours for a year-long or 67.5 hours for a semester-long. So, that is really where the, we have to dig into some of the classes and changing the bell schedules a little bit. But we have worked that out, where we are able to present that calendar to you with not having to take away the days in Thanksgiving, unless we have another storm, then we have to rework it again. But we will lose the early release day in October for everyone. Today, everybody came back early for, we took the in-service day and made it a student day. And that will be what we need to do to make up for all schools, except for QI. QI in December will have to give up their early release day as well. They have a power hour, so it affects the number of minutes in the class, so they'll have to go an extra day, that, a half, two extra hours. All right? Are there any questions about the calendar?
No.
Nope.
All right. Mr. Leary has a question.
So, yeah, you have allowed for, in case we do have another storm, that there would be, I heard, I heard on NPR today that one of the school districts, or I guess two or three of them in southwest Florida, actually are going to use that Friday after Thanksgiving. And I don't want to be shot anywhere I go in Palaca, so I'm, whatever we do, let's don't use that day.
We do, our students go to school a few more minutes every day than most of the districts around us. That's that shortened planning time that's embedded in the day, allows our students to be at school longer, and our staff gets their planning during the day while the students are there instead of before or after. So, our students already go to school way greater than the number of hours required without a hurricane. So, we keep within those standards. Now, if we have another hurricane, we will have to adjust again. But right now, we were able to keep whole by keeping Thanksgiving still that week off for everybody, by making the adjustments we made.
Did this affect, like, block scheduling?
It did. This week is an, this week goes a straight seven. So, the parents were notified by the schools that this week is an A, what we call them A-days. So, it means that they go to all seven periods this whole week. That helps us recalculate a couple of those hours to minutes.
But then they'll go back.
They'll go back to block scheduling. And on the early release days, certain schools like Palaca High School and QI will need to run a special bell just to collect those right numbers so that they can have each period have the right amount. So, they'll run a special bell on those two days, on those days.
It's actually not unusual, I mean, to have to, to make up the days. And they're built in, and hats off to the instructional team and the superintendent for getting this, where we can do it like this, so.
I really want to thank Stacy Owens upstairs and Renee Huff's department. She has done many, many, many calculations in working with the principals to create those new schedules for those early release days to make sure that we are correct in our minutes, so if we get audited, we have the correct minutes within those semesters.
And I think that would be a lot more palatable, because nobody wanted to give up their Thanksgiving holiday to come in and make those up. And I'm sure that will be a lot of people out of town anyway, so thank y'all for all you did on it.
Definitely. And thank you for, oh, excuse me.
Would there be, sorry. Would there be, would the governor, hasn't he in the past occasionally forgiven a day? No.
They wrote into statute a while back that you, they changed the 180 or the equivalent hours. So, they did that a while back, so you didn't have to request waivers for the day. But even, even when we requested waivers, they never gave up the hours. You still had to sit for the same amount of hours. So, they've done away with us having to request less than 180 days by creating that or the equivalent hours. But we must have the hours. And they do not usually, in fact, we've gotten a memo that says that they are not proposing to relieve any hours.
Madam Chair, can I have one thing? I know I communicate with, go ahead.
Okay. I was going to say, Mr. Leary, and then you may go.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Leary. I'm sorry. So, yeah, because the governor and DOE, you know, created a problem for us with, you know, calling school off that Tuesday. And it was the most beautiful day that we've had in weeks. Ironically, Orange County and the counties that were really impacted and that saw, you know, had interstates, were not closed. I, I, I just was flattered. had interstates, were not closed. I, I, I just was flabbergasted at that and so, and disappointed because, you know, it puts more stress on our staff and, you know, the kids in general. So anyway, I'm hoping that maybe we could get, you know, hopefully we don't have to, but that they can get their timing down a little better in the future. I understood, you know, in general, his, his reasoning, but, you know, I don't, you know, because Putnam County didn't have any interstates and people aren't really traveling through here that much. I didn't, I just couldn't connect the dots on that one.
Well, and I actually wanted to, I'm glad you brought that up because I did want to comment on that because I was at a meeting in Orlando. I got a call that afternoon, Monday, from the commissioner's office to, that we need to cancel school. I mean, they were asking and they gave the reasons where people were trying to leave and, I mean, I'm like you, I wasn't sure how many people we were going to get from either interstate, but we got to talking about it in our group here and, you know, probably, we probably had a number of people from here that might, may have wanted to leave. So we didn't want to hinder to that either, so. But again, that was one of the days, and I just want to publicly say, I want to thank everybody for their flexibility because I know we had to do some quick messaging. I mean, we actually met virtually. For, I was in Orlando, we had to meet and come up with a quick game plan to get the message out for the next day. So I just appreciate everybody acting so quickly to make that happen. But I think not only was it the people trying to leave the state, but we didn't want to impact our people here who might have wanted to try to leave too, so.
And, and the district, your, your staff and the first responders, the entire group are to be commended for, for your actions, your efforts, your foresight. I understand about not wanting to close, but when you're asked from someone that is your supervisor superior, if you will, say to you, "We want to use," you know, "Close your schools."
We were one of seven districts who were not closed on Tuesday that they asked to close.
And, and when you're asked.
I'm not sure what, who the other districts were, but.
All right, but, but again, I just want to commend you. And Mrs. Whitehurst and the entire team had people you were contacting. And it was just great because you didn't leave anybody out of the loop. Even my nieces, they were getting text messages because they had children in the school. And so, so you did a great, a great effort, a great job, a concerted effort, and everybody worked together. And, and this final, hopefully the final, that we won't have another hiccup. We fared well compared to others with Milton and Helene. But we, we, we just thankful that you all were able to come together and make it so that the people won't have to, as the superintendent said, because some have already made arrangements for Thanksgiving and, and other holidays. So we thank you all again, as we said earlier, for your efforts. Appreciate it.
I do want to correct one thing. When we come back from Christmas break, that week will also be a straight seven week. Sorry, there are two weeks we needed to fix for that. And we are in the process there. During this, these two hurricanes, it actually has straddled our FTE reporting, and we are working on trying to find alternate times to report for FTE. The state is even thinking about having another opportunity for a different window. There's a lot of things that were impacted, ESE meetings that impact your FTE. So we're working through those things now to try to get us the best optimal result at the end.
Again, thank you all so much. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, if you take a motion, I'll move that we approve emergency item L1, the adjustment to the academic calendar.
Second.
For 20, for 25.
Okay. Mr. Phil Leary made the motion that we accept the adjustment made to academic calendar by Mrs. Laura France, and it was second by Mrs. Linda Wagner. Any further comments or questions? All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. We are now out of emergency session. We don't, all right, we don't have, yes, we do. We have unfinished business. No new business, but unfinished business, the group life insurance agreement. Now.
We did have, Mr. Holmes did review that. If you recall, we put that off and,
Take it.
I don't know if you have anything you want to say about that?
My, my only statement would be, I had sent a suggested motion. If the board chooses to move forward with this, what you'd actually be doing is you'd be voting to make an application with the Symmetra Group for their benefit and insurance program. They would then consider that application and assuming they accepted it, they would actually provide a contract to be entered in. So the motion that you would make, should you choose to go forward, would be that you would move to, that the, that the district submit an application to Symmetra for benefits and the insurance in accord with their September 3, 2024 response to your request for proposals. So you're basically, you had an RFP out, you had five, as I recall, submissions. The insurance committee recommended the one, the proposal by Symmetra. There are details in the, in your board docs as to the five responses. And the insurance committee recommended that you go with the Symmetra proposal. So what you'd be doing right now is you'd be voting to submit an application for the benefits in accord with the fees and, and the insurance set forth in their proposal, the Symmetra proposal.
And, and then for clarification, from that application, Symmetra would then get it, look at it, and either decide to insure us or not.
I would imagine that unless something unforeseen comes up, they're planning on, on responding and, and accepting your application. But for clarification, they indicated that was the process that they worked through. They don't present a contract now to you. Instead, they ask for your application. And then, once they've accepted that application, they would submit the contract at that point.
Then we'd look at the contract, then vote on the contract.
The contract would, would be, we all assume it's going to be consistent with their response to your request for proposals.
Okay, but it then still will come to the board and we will vote. Okay, all right, I'm good.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, based on our attorney's advice, submit our request to, you know, for the insurance and that it comes back to the attorney and he will apprise us if, if everything is in line and lines up in the way, the manner he feels comfortable in our representation of the matter. And if I needed to add some wording, Dawn, you got to help me there?
I think that's the gist of it. You're, you're, you're voting to submit an application for the, for the insurance and benefits that they propose.
That's correct.
Second.
All right, it's been motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept, well, that we submit, sorry, that we submit an application to Symmetra for the insurance coverage. And then we will move at that point, based on the advice that will be given to us from our attorney, and it was second by Mr. Phil Leary. All right? Floor open for discussion. Any questions, comments? If not, are we?
Again, my concern is just that, that this can all get done before we need to do the registrations for our insurance. All right, or do, if, if it does take time, then do we offer it?
Anybody on the insurance committee? Andy, can you address that?
Andy Burnett, Insurance Chair, yes ma'am, Ms. Pickens, I do understand your concerns. We, we will still have time. We have our next insurance meeting on the 24th of this month, where we'll look at their contract again. It will be back to us. And we'll also look at our insurance recommendation for 2025. We've already started doing some work with, with the Symmetra, with the idea that that's what's going to happen for open enrollment. And we're looking at 11-18 to 12-6 for open enrollment right now. That's the plan. With the also administrative enrollment, that's just to clear up any inconsistencies that took place in the open enrollment from 12-9 to 12-11. And then on 12-20, we'll submit data, all the data from the open enrollment to payroll so the deductions can be taken out of the employee checks. So that's the plan right now. We have enough time to do it.
All right, Mrs. Pickens?
Thank you.
That's clear. All right, any further question? All right, hearing none. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Hearing none? Unanimous? We are now ready for our reports from our board members. We'll start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
Okay, thank you. Again, I just want to reiterate what Ms. Gilliard said in regards to our, our response and action in the hurricanes with the, the joint effort of, of so many different groups. And thank our administrators for going above and beyond and our district staff. I know there were many people that really appreciated it. I'd like to give, last night I was at Palaca High School, junior, senior high school at the middle school volleyball tournament, and a real treat, Mr. Bush had asked if the band would come and play. And so a band in a gym sounds really, really, really good. But they came and they played the National Anthem, and then I believe it was Palaca's Fight Song. And it was so cool for middle school girls to have that kind of attention and two groups really working together. Mr. Buckles was there. I thought it was amazing and I just want to say thank you to their band director. I think his name is Eric Stewart. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Anyway, it was, it was, it was great and very appreciative.
He was appreciating at the game, by the way.
Yes, yes. Don't, don't let that out. And also, I'd like to give a shout out to Oscar Jaimez, the Teacher of the Year at Crescent City Junior Senior High School. Oscar was a former student of mine. He's a graduate of the Paris de Prose, now called Grow Your Own, but he was an original member of that group. And I cannot tell you how proud I am of him and what a, just a fabulous young man and what a difference he's made in his community and his school. And Latina Hardy was our Support Associate of the Year at Crescent City Junior Senior High School. And she too has just, she was a, you know, she's a Crescent Cityan and she's just given back completely to her, her community and her school. I'd like to congratulate the Raider football team on becoming the district champs last night with their victory. I, I believe this could have been, last night was maybe their third Monday night game. You know, the hurricanes have played havoc on, on every, you know, sporting group. Crescent City and Palaca play this Friday night. It will be Crescent City's homecoming because last Friday was supposed to be their homecoming. And, you know, just, it's amazing to see how our administration just adapts to things that are thrown at them from all kinds of different situations. And our kids adapt to it too, and I think that, that's a great thing. One more thing, I received an invitation to the Veterans Memorial Ceremony at Crescent City Junior Senior High School. It's put on by the Army JROTC, Color Guard and the band at Crescent City. Ms. Gilliard came last year. It's an absolutely wonderful, very respectful event for our veterans. It will be a highlight of your day if you can make time to come Friday, November 8, from 10:15 to 11:15. And that's, they're very strict on that time because lunches have to, you know, get served and classes get in there. But I, I know you will agree, every year, Master Sergeant Pelahatch puts another element into it. And last year, they gave a rose to every and saluted every member in the stands. You know, that was a, a veteran. So I really would like to see us promote this as much as we can because they, they work so hard on it and really, it's not super well-attended. So just, I'll, I'll mention it again because we have another board meeting November 5, and I'll mention it again. Also, just lastly, Ms. Jackie, as a coach, you know, that having that bus ready and getting your children there and, you know, she was absolutely amazing. And every bus situation, she knows the south end of this county and its roads and its homes. And I did see Mr. Bowling said she has six months off and then she was going to come back. And I, I hope for the south end that that's exactly true, so hopefully you can talk her into that. She's an amazing person. I'm, I'm very, I'm a better person for if known her. And I'm through.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Pickens. Mr. Buckles?
Those bus drivers are our first line of defense and eyes and ears out in the outlying areas. I just really was very interested in Nathan Edens' presentation on homeless and the 588 number he had. I've always suspected it's probably double that in the county, but it, it's hard to, it's hard to perform miracles and get into every little nook and cranny and shed and tent that you can find, whether you're in, down there Whispering Pines or, or Houdal Ridge or Unit 17 in Lock and Lake Estates. It doesn't matter. We've got some serious issues that we deal with each and every day and our, our people, it's good to know that they're out there and they're working hard to find those kids that are, are hung out to dry and doing without. It's, and no more important than what you've seen in the hurricanes and the damage in certain areas. There's people living, if you go to some of the food banks and watch them pick up food on, out here at Hollister at the little shopping center or, or one of the other areas, you'll understand that there's a magnitude of problems here that not many people really envision each and every day. But beyond that, I was pleased to see the foundation come and make a presentation. I've heard more weird stuff about the foundation over the years that, that just really are just totally incorrect and untrue. But a prior board and a prior superintendent was able to find a way to get back a foundation that could benefit the kids of Putnam County, and they did that. And we've collected, I'm sure, over $400,000-plus already to, for award ceremonies and give awards for students. And I don't have the exact figures ahead of me, but I keep hearing, you know, some of the naysayers still out there that, "Well, you gave this building away," or it, it, that's, that couldn't be further from the truth. We had a foundation put together back in the early 80s and it was done away with by a former superintendent and board. And to build it or to form a school, the school didn't succeed and went under. We lost the foundation. Another board and superintendent restored the foundation. And it, as GP expands, as Seminole expands, this foundation can last in perpetuity and can not only do awards for students and award ceremonies and for teachers and certain things like that, but it can also help fund security needs in the district as well, like it does in other districts. So I'm optimistic that it is, it is going to be a, a good investment in the years to come for, for many people. And beyond that, the Guardian Program that continues to gain national scrutiny and recognition. I'm sure the superintendent is probably getting a little tired of having to go around the state and, and being called to go around the nation and talk about it. But that's the world we're living in. I can remember opening shelters back when we first started opening schools. And they weren't hardened shelters, but people would bring their, all their firearms from home and put them on the table in the cafeteria. You know, you'd have five or six guns on a table. I mean, that was back before everything went crazy with gun violence and things in our schools. But, you know, these people, they don't know if they're going, how home's going to be there when they get home or not. And, and I just, I, I just watch everything that has gone on in the formation of the Guardian Program and trying to work through the shelter situation. And I'm just couldn't be more proud of, 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 of our people. And somebody mentioned it a while ago, you know, our principals and our coaches and our administrative leaders, they figure these things out. You may give them a couple of gates or doorways that they have to man, but, you know, put it up, leave it up to them and they'll figure it out and they'll, they'll make you proud of them at the same time. So, Mr. Superintendent, if you'll pass that on to the staff.
Sure will.
We're really proud of what they did through the storms.
Thank you.
And that concludes me.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mrs. Wagner?
I just had a couple of things. I too wanted to say thank you to our district staff. I was, I was right in the middle of some things and I- I was, I was right in the middle of some things, and I didn't recognize the number, and I had a personal call from someone here at the district, just making sure that all the board members knew what the plan was, what was going on. And I said, y'all are working today? And she goes, well, not exactly. So, you know, it really shows going above and beyond. And I appreciate, like, we've had a conversation or two recently, how I'm particularly wanting to be in the know about certain, certain events going on in the community before things are coming to me, you know, so that I can respond more appropriately. That was very, very helpful to know what the district's plan was, and I just want to say I appreciate that, while I felt for them having to work during some of the crazy times with the hurricane. And I did just want to say I had a great lunch experience at Aquila about a week ago, where I was able to meet with multiple teachers and employees there. Was able to observe. I love observing when people are not really aware that I'm observing. I just really enjoyed seeing the kids in the lunchroom, and seeing the interactions with some of the teachers. And I had one in particular, I do not remember her name, but found out later, she's just sort of a sub or a part-timer. But the calmness in which she was interacting with these children that were kind of giving her a hard time at the time, I brought it up to her and told her we appreciated it. I had, this is one of the things I've been doing, trying to go around and have lunches at the various schools, and just, just to, just to be there, and to let the schools in my particular district at the moment, you know, give them someone to talk to if they need, and be able to meet them, and meet the teachers that are in our classrooms, and see what's going on, what's great, what are we doing wonderful, and what can we be of better service to them. So I was able to have some wonderful conversations with teachers, and some of those ideas that I'm getting, I'll be bringing to the board at some point, when I get a little further into it. And I was so excited to get the invitation to the Crescent City function, because I was not able to go last year. And then, I believe it's conflicting, I'd already RSVP'd to do something at Jenkins. And so I was sad that there was a conflict there, but I did apologize, because I was, I was really looking forward to going to Crescent City again. I just love the drive. It's quite a drive, but it's a beautiful one. I just love going down there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Wagner. Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too would like to echo my colleagues' good wishes and thankfulness for our staff and all the things that they do. And many times, you know, in situations like Dr. Searcy was saying, that, you know, kind of the last minute trying to put things together. But it looks more and more like we're in this sequence of storm events on an annual basis. And I can assure you that Wednesday morning, the track showed it coming in at Tampa Bay and going directly northeast, and would have come right across Palaca. Had that happened, you know, there would have been many people that were at the shelters. And in fact, there were, my numbers, Dr. Searcy, not to step on maybe what you're going to talk about, but, you know, 750 people in the shelters Wednesday night, which is probably one of the largest, you know, ones we've ever had in the district. And, you know, some concerns did come back to me about, you know, that Thursday morning, that there was, you know, some urgency for people to pack up their stuff and move, you know, back to their homes. And I think that, you know, almost 500 did that. But, you know, one of the things that I think is important for us to realize, and that, you know, we as a board, we're not in the direct operations or, you know, on a basis like, you know, Dr. Searcy and Mr. Bowling. But that, you know, it's important that we can help these people and treat them, you know, with as much respect and dignity and understanding, which I know the staff does. But, you know, sometimes we're put in a situation through other circumstances that create some confusion, I guess is the best word for it. You know, we have, there's supposed to be four Red Cross representatives at each shelter. Many of the people are transported to and from the shelters by public transportation, or even, you know, people volunteering to go get them and move them. And so, as most entities do whenever they have a major event, you know, they kind of go back and look and see, you know, what are the good things that we did, and what are some of the things that we can improve on. You know, I would like to see the board, Madam Chairman, you know, do a committee, I'm happy to chair it, to look at some of the things, you know, with the shelter operations and the coordination, and then, you know, the people who are there, and that type of thing. The other thing is that I think there's a misnomer out there, that the board can't be reimbursed for the expenditures we have for our employees, which is not the case. Under a federal and state disaster declaration, all expenses will be paid by FEMA ultimately, either through the state to us, or directly from FEMA to us. And so we, in fact, Jonathan was talking with Dr. Searcy before the meeting, I think they're going to look into that, because, you know, you're talking about a lot of money, and, you know, two times, you know, within a three-week period, you know, having this. So I'm just, you know, throwing it out as an idea to maybe that, you know, we could work and see, you know, some of the good things that happen, and some of the things that may could be improved on, not just by us, but from a communication standpoint, you know, with the other, our other partners, you know, other governmental agencies and partners.
Okay. All right. And I saw Dr. Searcy writing it down.
Yeah.
So he's going to take care of that.
Okay. That's it for me, Madam Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Leary. Just real quick, just want to give a thumbs up to Mrs. Drew and the therapy dog. I wrote myself a little note in going through everything that is there, from allergies to insurance and feeding of the dog, well, of our therapy dog. You covered all the bases, and we want to thank you for that. I know that a lot of schools are going to benefit from it. And I like the portion that allows the principal to still decide if and when. And so it's great. Thank you for that. Just want to commend QI publicly for being designated as a National Blue Ribbon School, exemplary high-performance school. And they will be presented this designation or distinction in Washington, D.C., November 6th through the 8th. And Dr. Searcy will be going as well. And again, we are so proud of the efforts that they're making. And when you look at the number of schools, 356 in the nation altogether were selected, and only 13 in the state of Florida. And Putnam County is one of them. See? I mean, it's not the size of the dog in the fight.
Size of the fight in the dog.
I'm telling you. I'm telling you. And you're doing great things, the leadership teams and the administration. And as Mr. Leary said, they're getting tested and hit over and over again, but they rise to the challenge. And so we just want to commend that entire staff out there and the students. Also, Mrs. McCool and Dr. Searcy will be presenting. You know what? I've noticed, as I've been going through the agenda, right now, Mrs. Whitehurst, she's presenting somewhere. You don't present unless you have something to present, and folk want what you have. And this is what is happening. They are noticing what is happening in Putnam County. So in October, the 28th through the 30th, Mrs. McCool and Dr. Searcy will be presenting, it's Chicago, right, Chicago, Illinois, on roots, on innovation, and cultivating STEM in every subject. That's powerful. And I know you're going to make us proud of you. And then, again, another thumbs up, or two thumbs up, to Project Praise, Mr. Eddins, and the great job he's doing. Used to be a part of it way, way back when I could see her face. Yes.
Courtney Carter.
Courtney, Courtney Carter, when she was over it, and how we were, I was involved then, and kind of sort of drifted, but energized again by his presentation, and what this means to the students in our community. And finally, just a reminder of what they shared with us during all of our workshops, when we were a part of SREB, and the reading program that we had, successful. They would always say, a portion of what we do, we can't forget to celebrate, to have fun, to laugh. And then, after you celebrate those successes, we can move on and do other things. So, Dr. Searcy, whatever it takes, you know, I mean, I know you do it, and you challenge them, and you commend them for the jobs well done, but encourage them to celebrate more of their successes and their people.
Sure will.
All righty. Attorney Holmes?
I have nothing, Madam Chair.
And thank you for bringing what you brought to us concerning the insurance. We appreciate that. All right. Superintendent Searcy?
And board members, if you'll have your calendars handy, just want to give you some dates that you may or may not already have. And while you're doing that, I just want to echo what some of you already said, you know, the way that our staff really responded during the two hurricanes, and opening the shelters, and, you know, they really acted like overnight to get ready and to do all that. And by the way, we sent our maintenance staff, again, for Hurricane Milton, out to Dixie County and to Swanee County to help them. And they started to go down to Levy County, and then the National Guard came in. So those superintendents reached out to me and asked if we could help, and I offered the help beforehand. But again, us superintendents in our district and Nefac, we definitely try to lean on each other, and they would do the same here if it was reversed. We do have Teachers and Support Related Employees of the Year for every school, and as well as the district level. So we're actually going to have a celebratory breakfast. If you'll write this date down, on October 29th, at 8:00 a.m. at the Celo Cafeteria. If you are cordially invited, 8:00 a.m. on the 29th at the Celo Cafeteria. Everyone, Mr. Attorney and board members, you're welcome to attend and celebrate our honorees. And then, I just want to thank all of you, and all of our parents, and all of our staff and students, just for being flexible. I know Laura France presented our new updated calendar, but they took a lot of time, and we've already talked about that, just to make sure we didn't take away from holiday time. But again, just adjusting the calendar, and, you know, that's the things we have to deal with. And if you live in Florida, if you live in New York, you deal with that with snow days, you know?
Yes.
So it's what we have to deal with. On October 24th, we have a community engagement session at Browning Pierce Elementary School, beginning at 6:00 p.m., and that should last through 7:30. And again, that's where myself and the staff are there, and we invite parents and community members, as well as you, to come out and just get an update on what's going on, and allow them to ask questions. And I believe we have a virtual audience there as well. So it's a great opportunity to connect with our community. Don't forget about the, November 5th is Voting Day. The next day is our next board meeting. So just encourage everybody to get out and vote. It's a presidential election. I know there's some local elections as well. But try to vote before the board meeting, if you can, whatever works for you. This month, actually starting today through November 15th, is Hispanic Heritage Month. And that is, we actually rescheduled that. That was originally scheduled earlier, but we had to reschedule that due to the storm. And that will be on November 15th. It's on a Friday, and it will be a celebration held in the Celo Auditorium. And that's gotten to be a great celebration time, you know, really celebrating a very large and valuable part of our community, and have a lot of people turn out for that. So I encourage you to come out. I don't have the time in front of me right now. Ashley's not in here, but we'll get that time to you, just if you'll put the date down. And we also, can I read this? Okay. Next Wednesday, October 23rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Rhonda Odom, as you well know, is retiring, and we're going to have a little retirement celebration for her. And will that be in here?
Time again.
So 11:00 a.m. through 2:00 p.m. And encourage you all to come out and celebrate Rhonda's many years of service. And finally, I know, thank you for, Holly, for mentioning about the Crescent City Veteran Ceremony. And I think, Lynda, you mentioned the one at Jenkins. That's a veteran ceremony, as well as a dedication for Robert H. Jenkins and the naming of the school. We never have had a formal ceremony, so that will take place on the 8th of November as well. I don't have a time yet for that, but we will make sure you have that, if any of you that are available. Lynda, I think you said you were already committed?
Yes, and I think it's, I've got it at-
Oh, actually, y'all were sent a calendar invite. You're right.
Yes, sir.
Right.
I think it's at 8:15.
8:15, 10:15. Thanks. So it should be on your calendar already. Madam Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before the board? Anything else for the good of order? Hearing none?